Good evening, everyone. Before we begin our school board meeting this evening, we have a wonderful student from Destrahan High School who's going to bless us with his prayer this evening. But before he does that, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Mr. Glenn Taylor, who is a senior at Destrahan High School. He is an all honors AP student with a 4.27 GPA. Congratulations, Mr. Taylor. That is phenomenal.
Thank you, guys.
He is also captain of the Destrahan High Golf Team, a member of the Superintendent Student Advisory Board, and the Fellowship of Christian Students. He is the recipient of the Posse Scholarship, and, listen to this, has earned a full scholarship to the University of Notre Dame. So if you would now, Mr. Taylor, lead us in your prayer.
If you could please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we gather here today asking for your guidance, support, and wisdom as we begin this meeting. Lord, we ask that you let us engage in meaningful discussion. And lastly, Lord, we just pray for safe travels as we return home tonight. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
Mr. Savile, now lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Taylor. We appreciate your prayers this evening. I call to order the St. Charles Parish Public School Board Meeting for Wednesday, December the 15th, 2021. Our roll call this evening shows that all board members are present, including our superintendent, Dr. Ken Ortling, and our Board Secretary, Ms. Shelley Babinow. Welcome, all. We're going to begin this evening with our recognitions. Item 2.01 is the recognition of our Christmas card winner. I tried to make mine stand up. Y'all got yours up? You got yours up? I tried. It's precious. Let me tell you a little bit about this. The annual Christmas card contest is held for students for the honor of having their design selected as the board's official Christmas card. The 2021 winner is Claire Troxler, a fifth-grade student at Luling Elementary. I understand she is at gymnastics practice this evening. So her principal, Mr. Sam Mueller, and resident art teacher, Ms. Alexis Tomplain, will accept on Ms. Claire's behalf. And at this time, Dr. Ortling and I will present a framed picture of her card.
Item 2.02, Board and Superintendent's recognition.
Students. Hornville High School students are swimming district champions in the 50 Free Brady Dufren. And for the girls, 400 Free Relay, Mackenzie Burke, Gabrielle Fob, and Sarah Gassen. Hornville High School students were named to the volleyball All-District First Team, Carly Dufren. And Trista Nakann, who was also named the Most Valuable Player for Offense. School system students were named to the Football All-District First Team, Destrahan High School players, Kevin Adams. William Bryant. Landry Cannon. Kalajh Cobbins. Shane Lee. Stephen Walker, who was also named the Most Valuable Player for Defense. And Dontrell Willwright. From Hornville High School, Royal Grover. Troy Kendrick. Jude Milford. Dakota Morales. Jerian Shelby. Sincere Simmons. And Jaren Smith. Employees. Satellite Center employee received a Brown Foundation Service Learning Grant of $2,800, Craig Howitt. Destrahan High School employee was named the Football District Coach of the Year, Marcus Scott. And we are also honoring two teams tonight. Hornville High School Girls Swim Team is the district champion. Coaches Elizabeth Parino and Amy Tamplin. And any swimmers in the audience, please come forward as well. Destrahan High School Football Team is the undefeated district champion. Head coach Marcus Scott. And any other Destrahan coaches or football players in the audience, please come forward as well.
We congratulate all of our honorees tonight on your hard work, dedication, and your excellence in your fields. We thank you so much for joining us this evening. Now, we're going to be moving on to our business portion of the meeting. You're welcome to stay. But if you'd like to leave at this time, we'll have a two-minute recess. We are going to get started with our meeting again, the business item portion of the evening. Item 3.01, minutes of the November 15th, 2021 committee meetings and November 17th, 2021 regular board meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
That was a motion by Mr. Robichaud and a second by Mr. Nakann. Okay, there were a number of them all at once. All right. Do we have any discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.01 passes unanimously. Item 3.02, reapportionment Plan 1A Resolution Adoption. Based on the results of the 2020 census, it is required by law to redraw election district lines due to population shifts. Representatives from South Central Planning presented four alternative reapportionment plans to the school system. A public hearing was held on Monday, December 13th, 2021, at 5:00 PM to gather input regarding reapportionment plans. This item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 13th, 2021, and aligns with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Nakann, a second by Mr. Suffern. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Does this item require a roll call vote?
Not to my knowledge. Do you feel it does?
Every item is a roll call vote, please.
I think it does. To be safe.
To be safe, we should?
I think we should.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Then we'll do a roll call vote, please. Mr. Alexander? Mr. Nakann?
Yay.
Mr. Savile? Melinda Menard? Yeah, yay, yes, yes, yay. Mr. Suffern?
Yay.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Robichaud?
Yes.
And Mr. Oakland?
Yes.
That item passes unanimously. Item 3.03, bid authorization request replacement of the Destrahan High School and Hornville High School stadium lighting. Destrahan High School and Hornville High School stadium lighting is an approved project of the 2019 sales tax bond issue. The construction plans for the Destrahan High School and Hornville High School stadium lighting project has been completed by the engineer and are ready for bid. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 13th, 2021, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Robichaud and a second by Mr. Suffern. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.03 passes unanimously. Item 3.04, ratification of substantial completion, EJ Landry Alternative Center Roof Replacement. The EJ Landry Alternative Center Roof Replacement Project is ready for ratification of acceptance as substantially complete. The final inspection was held on Thursday, November 11th, 2021, with punch list items remaining. The engineer recommends acceptance. Acceptance of ratification of substantial completion will allow the contractor to process all close-out documents. This recommendation was discussed with the Board President, Vice President, and Capital Improvements Chairperson. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 13th, 2021, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept the ratification of substantial completion of the EJ Landry Alternative Center Roof Replacement Project.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Mr. Nakann. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.04 passes unanimously. Item 3.05, ratification of Change Order Number Two, Mimosa Park Elementary School Buildings A, C, and D renovations. The contract modifications included in Change Order Number Two are as follows. Number one, add condensate lines in loop of pumps at a cost of $3,513.62. Two, credit for reuse of storefront door unit at a savings of $2,100. The total cost for all changes is $1,413.62. Seventy-four contract days were added to the contract for Phase Two as a result of construction change directives, weather delays, Hurricane Ida delays, and owner convenience delays. To prevent further delay of the project, authorization was given to the contractor to proceed with the work after getting approval from the Board President, Vice President, and Capital Improvements Chairperson. Approval of this change order will allow the district to make the necessary modifications to the existing contract. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 13th, 2021, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move acceptance of the ratification of Change Order Number Two for Mimosa Park Elementary School Buildings A, C, and D renovations.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Mr. Suffern, sorry, Dennis. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.05 passes unanimously. Item 3.06, substantial completion Mimosa Park Elementary School Buildings A, C, and D renovations. The renovations at Mimosa Park Elementary School Buildings A, C, and D have been completed. The project is ready to be accepted as substantially complete. The final inspection was held on Wednesday, December 8th, 2021, with punch list items remaining. Acceptance of the renovations as substantially complete will allow the contractor to proceed all close-out documents. The architect recommends acceptance. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 13th, 2021, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move we accept the Mimosa Park Elementary School Buildings A, C, and D renovations as substantially complete.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Mr. Suffern. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.06 passes unanimously. Item 3.07, proposed 2022-2023 School Session Calendar First Reading. School Board policy mandates that the school board shall adopt a calendar for the forthcoming school session. A committee composed of school board members, a business and industry representative, central office administrators, principals, teachers, parents, and students prepare a calendar for board approval in accordance with our policy and procedures. Adoption of the calendar for the forthcoming school year as early as possible allows for the information to be disseminated to all stakeholders in a timely fashion. This agenda item was reviewed at the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 13th, 2021, and is aligned with Goal A of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Madam President, I move that we approve the proposed 2022-2023 school session calendar for the first reading.
A second.
Have a motion by Mr. Suffern and a second by Mr. Oakland. Do we have any discussion?
I'd just like to thank Regina McMillan for the job she did in getting feedback from stakeholders during the committee to, you know, get a lot of comments and so forth from all people involved so that we could propose the best calendar possible for all of our stakeholders.
She does an extraordinarily efficient job in getting that done. Thank you, too. Appreciate it. Okay? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.07 passes unanimously. Item 3.08, revisions to policy 4.28 resignation, second reading and adoption.
Madam President, I move that we accept the revisions to Board Policy 4.28 resignation for a second reading and adoption.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Nakann and a second by Mr. Savile. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.08 passes unanimously. Item 3.09, revisions to policy 4.22 permanent status teachers and administrators, second reading and adoption.
Madam President, I move that we accept the revisions to Board Policy 4.22 permanent status teachers and administrators for a second reading and adoption, please.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Nakann and a second by Mr. Savile. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.09 passes unanimously. Item 3.10, revisions to policy 4.29 Retirement, second reading and adoption.
Move approval.
A second.
Have a motion by Mr. Robichaud and a second by Mr. Oakland. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. That vote passes seven in favor and one not present for the vote. Item 3.11, revisions to policy 4.21, 4.21, probation, second reading and adoption.
Madam President, I move we accept the revisions to Board Policy 4.21, probation for a second reading and adoption.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Savile and a second by Mr. Oakland. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.11 passes with seven in favor and one board member not present for the vote. Item 3.12, Retirement of Policy 4.56 Separation/Resignation for Classified Employees. Have a motion by Mr. Robichaud and a second by Mr. Savile. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Alexander.
Oh, I'm, oh, I thought it was you, Mr. Savile. You sure?
It was two people at the same time.
Thank you. Well, it's closest to my ear. All right, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.12 passes unanimously. Item 3.13, Personnel Items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 13th, 2021, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Move approval.
Have a motion by Mr. Nockhand.
Second.
Second by Mr. Savoie. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to recognize someone in the audience who on this agenda item will be, will be hopefully selected as an ex assistant principal at Luling Elementary School, and that's Ms. Deandra Reynard. Thank you for joining us this evening, Ms. Reynard.
Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.13 passes unanimously. Item 3.14, Accounts Payable for the Month of November 2021. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Request for approval of these transactions is normally made to the board monthly. The board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 13th, 2021, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of November 2021 in a total amount of $5,948,619.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Robichaud. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.14 passes unanimously. Item 3.15, Election of President of the Board. Board Policy 2.12, Officers of the Board calls for the election of a president and vice president to perform various tasks as defined in official policies of the board. Board Policy 2.12 calls for the election to take place in December in order for one of its members to serve as president of the board, and another will serve as vice president for the subsequent year. Conducting an election for the presidency of the board in December is in accordance with Board Policy 2.12.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Mr. Alex Sufferin as president.
A second.
Have a motion by Mr. Robichaud and a second by Mr. Nockhand.
Madam President, I move that nominations be closed.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Nockhand and a second by Mr. Robichaud that nominations be closed. Uh, any further discussion? Please cast your vote.
There you go.
Okay. Item 3.15 passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Sufferin.
Thank you. The superintendent assured me that in 2022 that there would be no pandemic challenges, no hurricane or major weather event or any other challenges. So with, with that assurance, I accept this opportunity. Seriously, uh, thank you very much for your support and your confidence, more so than an honor and a privilege. I, I view it as a tremendous responsibility, and it's one that I do not take lightly. I also view the president's role as a part, as part of a shared leadership. We have many outstanding leaders in the district, board members, our superintendent, executive staff members, school administrators, and others. And, um, and I know I can count on all to do their part, and I promise to do mine. So thank you very much for your support.
Item 3.16, Election of Vice President of the Board. Board Policy 2.12, Officers of the Board calls for the election of a president and vice president to perform various tasks as defined in official policies of the board. Board Policy 2.12 calls for the election to take place in December in order for one of its members to serve as president of the board, and another will serve as vice president for the subsequent year. Conducting an election for the vice presidency of the board in December is in accordance with Board Policy 2.12.
Madam President, I'd like to offer the nomination of Mr. Arthur Oakland as vice president.
A second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Nockhand.
Madam President, I move that nominations be closed.
Um, okay. Have a motion by Mr. Nockhand and a second by Mr. Sufferin that we close nominations. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 3.16 passes unanimously. Congratulations. We appreciate you stepping up, Mr. Oakland, our new vice president.
And I'll just say, I'll support Al as president in all the endeavors that he just said earlier, so.
I love it. Okay, all right. We're going to move now to our closing items. Item 4.01, Announcement of the Intent to Call an Election. As part of the Long Range Strategic Action Plan, the district has identified the need for renovations to schools and other facilities. These district-wide projects will require funding through the sale of general obligation bonds. The district plans to hold an election on April 30th, 2022 to authorize the issuance of these general obligation bonds. In connection with the plans to hold this election, the district hereby makes the following announcement. Announcement of Public Meeting. Notice is hereby given that at its meeting to be held on Wednesday, January 26th, 2022, at 6:30 PM at the Parish School Board Office, 13855 River Road, Luling, Louisiana, the Parish School Board of the Parish of St. Charles, State of Louisiana, plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling an election to be held in School District Number One of the Parish of St. Charles, State of Louisiana, to authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds therein. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 13th, 2021, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan. And that is something that we will look forward to doing in January. Now, Item 4.02, Standing Committee Reports. The chair will hear from any chairpersons who would like to report at this time.
Madam President, the Capital Improvement Committee met on Monday, December 13th. There were six items on the committee's agenda. The first one was, we reviewed and polished up our reapportionment plans, and that item was approved at the meeting tonight. The second item was bid authorization request for stadium lighting at the high schools. That item was also approved tonight. The third item on our Monday's agenda was ratification of substantial completion of the E.J. Landry Roof Replacement Project, and that item was also approved tonight. The fourth item on our agenda was ratification of Change Order Number Two for Mimosa Park Elementary Buildings A, C, and D renovations, and also the, uh, the ratification of substantial completion for Mimosa Park Elementary Buildings A, C, and D renovations. And the final item on our Monday's meeting was a discussion of the council on age and, and the Honville Learning Center update upon the, the building was severely damaged by Hurricane Ida, and we, um, um, took up some considerations as to what to do with that, that, um, that, um, school building and property. And that includes, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
Madam President, the Personnel Policy Committee met on Monday, the 13th. We discussed two items at that meeting. First item was Retirement of Policy 4.56, Separation and Resignation for Classified Employees. Uh, second item was, uh, our personnel items, our personnel moves for, um, the last 30 days. Those two items were brought to the board table and approved tonight. Also approved tonight were four additional items for second reading. There was Revision of Policy 4.21, Revision of Policy 4.29, Revision of Policy 4.22, and Revision of Policy 4.28. Those were second readings, and those four were also approved at the board table tonight. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nockhand.
Madam President, the Technology Committee met Monday night, December 13th. Discussion on the item was the AT&amp;T contract, which ended third year, and the board decided to exercise the option of going forward one more year. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Savoie.
The, Madam President, the Insurance Committee met Monday also. Uh, we had one item on the agenda. The Insurance Committee heard from our risk manager and our broker on our health insurance to have different options on what we foresee the near future for our health insurance.
Okay, thank you. And the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee met on Monday, December 13th. Uh, that item was brought forward this evening and voted on earlier, and that was the Proposed 2022-23 School Session Calendar for its first reading. Moving on to Item 4.03, our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Now first, we'd like to say congratulations to the Destrehan High School Wildcat Football Team, coaches, players, on a great season while making it all the way to the semifinals in the 5A State Football Playoffs. Their hard work, determination, and success certainly makes our AAA school system and community proud and is a true testament to their commitment to excellence. We'd also like to thank all of the programs that directly support their continued success, including band, color guard, dance, and cheer teams, in addition to the trainers and medical professionals. Please tune in to Channel 8 over the Christmas break to view beautiful Christmas programs hosted by our schools throughout December. These holiday programs feature the outstanding talents of our students in St. Charles Parish. The Channel 8 programming schedule can be found on the district's website. And finally, on behalf of the St. Charles Parish Public School System, I want to wish all families, employees, and members of the community a wonderful holiday season. Holidays will extend from December 20th through January 2nd. Classes will resume on Monday, January 3rd, 2022. While challenging, it has been an extraordinarily opportunistic year where we have come together to reimagine services and provide high-quality educational opportunities for our students. I'd like to give a special thanks to our teachers, administrators, counselors, nurses, custodians, food nutrition personnel, bus operators, distribution men and women, maintenance personnel, our school board, and all St. Charles Parish Public School staff for your commitment to our organization, each other, and most importantly, our students. We appreciate each and every one of you. May all of you have a joyful, safe, and blessed holiday season and a healthy and happy New Year. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Ortling. I would ask the board if I may have a moment of personal privilege, please. As this concludes my, uh, year of being the school board president, I did want to say to my fellow board members that I thank you for allowing me the privilege of serving as the board president this year. There's a great deal of wisdom on this board. Each of us has our own areas of expertise, and working together, I think, uh, we make a pretty terrific team, and I appreciate working with you. Dr. Ortling, uh, has stated earlier this year that, um, it was, uh, it was an interesting year, is how he put it. And, and, and so it has been. It has been. And I have to say, though, that his positivity in seeing barriers and obstacles as opportunities to learn and grow is what drives this district because he has everybody thinking that way. We, as a district, are in great hands under Dr. Ortling's leadership. I also would like to let... I also want to say that I'm extraordinarily proud of our St. Charles Parish Public School employees, extraordinarily proud of each and every single one of you in each and every single department. You have stepped up in unprecedented ways to keep our schools open and our students learning. The caring, sharing, and giving of yourselves until the work gets done is truly awe-inspiring. And to our parents, grandparents, aunts, and uncles who have stepped up to assist our children in practicing skills at home that teachers have taught in the classrooms, but the children need more practice to master them. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I know it's challenging to understand today's curriculum and how our content is taught now, but that practice at home is critical when so many days have been lost due to the pandemic in Ida. Please know your understanding and support is tremendously appreciated. We are thankful each and every one of you who work so hard at home to support what we do in the classroom. And that being said, I wish everyone a very merry and blessed Christmas and a less interesting 2022.
Okay, y'all ready? Y'all ready?
Yeah.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
And I move adjourned.
Have a motion by Mr. Robichaud and a second by Mr. Nockhand. We are adjourned.